All right, it is six o'clock. Call this meeting to order. If you will, all those that are coming in, please make sure you sign in with the correct information. This time, I'd like to call an invocation of Mr. Lonnie Waters, if you will.
Lord, we bow here just to give you thanks and glory for all good things. Lord, we ask you to watch over all the doctors, nurses, first responders, Lord, everybody that's trying to take care of our public. Lord, as we move through this meeting, conducting city business, we ask you to watch over mayor, council, make the interim mayor, and give them the guidance and the direction they need to go for the city. All these favors and blessings in your name. Amen.
Before I call to adopt the agenda, I'd like to remind everyone that is here tonight, the rules of the open meeting is we will go by the agenda. If an item is not listed on the agenda, it will not be discussed in an open meeting. This time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Make a motion, we adopt the agenda.
Second, I would like to add one item if I could. A consideration or a discussion of the restroom projects on the North Main Street.
Yes.
Would that be new business? Item K?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Cares. This time, the approval of the minutes of January 3rd, 2022, regular council meeting. Entertain a motion to approve as presented.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor? And cares. Under old business, item A, approval of Resolution 2022-01, Amendment Number One to the Employee Personal Handbook, Ms. Beverly Ragland.
Okay, council, if you recall, at the November, I believe it was 15th meeting, we presented the revised Employee Personal Handbook, and it is required in the handbook for it to be on public inspection for two weeks. We did pass the handbook on December 20th, and at the January 3rd meeting, we presented our first amendments to it. So it has been two weeks, we have not received any comment negative or otherwise. So I'm asking council to approve Amendment Number One to the Employee Personal Handbook.
Council, this time entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve Amendment Number One to the handbook.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, council. Under new business, consideration of approval for Sharp Top Distilling Company LLC to advertise her license, Ms. Lindsay Williams. If you'll come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Proton and Council. Sharp Top Distilling Company LLC has applied for a distillery license with a cocktail room at 104 North Main Street. They have no disqualifying factors, and we're just asking if we could please start advertising for them.
Fantastic. This time entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve for them to start advertising.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, council. Next item, consideration and approval for Culinary Gateway, Getaway, excuse me, same Lindsay Williams.
What's again? I know. So Culinary Gateway LLC, also known as The Lunch Box, they're located at 345 North Main Street. They'd like to get a retail consumption license for beer and wine. We're just asking again if we could advertise, we can advertise them for them.
And for our town motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve for them to advertise for their alcohol licenses.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is there seating in that restaurant? I think out there quite a bit, but never.
There is seating in there, yes. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Thank you, council. And number C, same for Woodbridge Tavern LLC, Ms. Lindsay Williams.
And it's Woodbridge Tavern LLC, they're located at 44 Chambers Street. They're requesting a retail consumption license for beer, wine, and distilled spirits, no disqualifying factors, and we're just asking that they begin advertising for them as well.
Entertain a motion, council.
Make a motion that we approve them to advertise for their alcohol license, Woodbridge.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Thank you, council. Item D, consideration and approval to review the alcohol ordinances, council members Looney, Ms. Anne, and Ms. Lindsay Williams.
I just think that we need to.
That we just talked about where we're going to need to look at that, because a couple of the places that we're wanting to have is single sales, so I think that's something we're probably going to need to get with Saffan and then bring back to the council.
So no action needed.
No.
Also, there's been talk over the years of the actual fact that they had to ask us to advertise for a license rather than an issue, and that process is some probably a process.
At the staff level?
Yeah.
So I believe the action would be for city council to direct staff to start that review process, and then we would bring what we find back to you in this close to you.
Do you want to sign it to a committee? Or get it to staff?
I think let's let the staff get the information.
Good, because I'm pretty going to come now.
I know, that's why I'm sending it on to the staff. And also, I think at the staff level, to let them, like you were just saying, so they don't have to come every single time just to get it advertised.
I like that.
Make it an easier process.
So staff's going to bring it when it's ready to be approved?
Discuss.
Discuss, yeah.
All right, next item, no action needed there.
So we're moving that on to staff. Do we want to take action to table it, or just?
Would you like a motion on?
I think we probably need to make a motion to pass this to staff, to table and pass it on to staff.
Entertain a motion. Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Thank you, council. Item B, consideration and approval to add city manager Sonia James to signature cards on city banking accounts, Lindsay Williams. That may be the first time in public that's been pronounced correctly. You're welcome.
You'll hear serious say it.
Because we're just asking permission to add our new city manager to all of our signature cards, so.
I'll make a motion that we add city manager to all the signature cards for our banking accounts.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Thank you, council. Item M, consideration and approval of City of Jasper Fire Department fee schedule, Mr. Chief Steve Roper.
Hi, council. So I have a view on going to defer to Captain Holden. He did all the legwork for us and put all the fees. Lastly, I want to implement these fees for the City of Jasper to offset budget and cover costs of running equipment and manpower through the fire department.
If I'm not mistaken, this has gone through committee a time or two. This brings us up to date with other jurisdictions.
Correct, yes. This is about five to eight different municipalities that I took studies on and combined. I've met with Ms. James and Mayor, everything, so I come up with this fee schedule, providing to y'all.
And this was passed through the Public Safety Committee, as you know.
Yes. Entertain a motion, council.
Make a motion that we accept this new fee schedule.
Second.
Any discussion?
So this is a policy, or this qualifies as a policy, that we could change?
Fees, it would be fees, yes.
Fees.
And council has the ability to change fees throughout the process.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
No, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Thank you, council.
I did want to mention and pretend that we drafted like a fire marshal ordinance and a burn permit ordinance, and I think due to other matters burning brighter, so to speak, both those got put on a back burner. How's that for a fluke? And, but we may want to look at those ordinances again, and at least one of the ordinance had proposed fees, but we could take these fees and insert it into the ordinance, but have it be more consistent. And I know one of the ordinance was setting out in more detail all the duties of the fire marshal, but he's performing now, but he'll just put in our ordinance what he's doing. And then for the open burn permit, it requires certain activities by the homeowner that's going to be burning as a safety measure. So I'm just wanting to remind y'all that we may need to return to those ordinances at some point and then incorporate these fee schedules into.
Can we suggest that staff get with Mr. Saffan and bring that up?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Item G, I didn't know if he's going to make a stand up here, no. Consideration and approval of certificate of residential fee schedule, Chief Steve Roper. You just want to get your steps in.
I forgot about the residential stuff. Before, the city had not charged for any COs residential or commercial, so I put together a residential fee schedule, which I'll have a copy of. It is a copy of the banking scam that the city of. So we just married the county of all the, or it's on the residential. And there's a starter step process, you know, depending on the square footage, just what the city of costs.
Fantastic. Entertain a motion, council.
I'll make a motion that we accept the fee schedule for residential.
And before y'all vote, there's a reference to the penalty of being the $1,000 fine or up to 60 days in detention. Under the new charter, it can be up to 180 days in detention. So if we could substitute instead of 60, put in 180, and then otherwise, I think the proposal's fine.
Would you stick a match up to the charter?
Yes.
I'll second the motion with that change.
Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, I have a question. So historically, to me, the CO is just a part of the permitting process, but we're now separating those processes, is that what we're doing? And that's the best practice, as far as that's what most communities are doing?
Yes, most communities.
On the front end, on end, when you receive it?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, we'll still do the admin fee plus the CO fee. Once inspection work.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Mr. Looney, did you prefer to say?
He did.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Thank you, council. Next item, consideration and discussion of purchase-sell agreement. I'll refer to the city manager.
So Saff has worked with legal to develop the attached purchase-sell agreement between the Downtown Development Authority of Jasper and the City of Jasper to transfer ownership of Pearl Park back to the city. So the desire of staff and legal is for this to take place in order to demolish some of the structures on the property that are unsafe for our citizens. So a joint meeting will be held with the Downtown Development Authority to author us the agreement on February the 15th, 2022, at 1:30 PM at the Chamber of Commerce. Prior to that, we need to go ahead and have city council approve and adopt the purchase-sell agreement, so that we can obtain the legal signatures to take that to the DDA for their signatures.
Well, if I could clarify a little bit, this is basically a real estate sales contract. The DDA is already obligated by both an intergovernmental agreement and another contract to convey the property back to the city. As part of those contracts, we have the obligation to pay off any outstanding loan on the property, which we are going to do, it's with United Community Bank. I am fine with the entire council attending closing if you want to. As an option, y'all could approve the real estate sales contract tonight, and then approve that the mayor and city clerk just sign whatever necessary closing documents they got to sign on February 15th, and then y'all wouldn't necessarily have to attend a second meeting. The DDA is already meeting, and we wouldn't need for them to take action. And the only other thing I can think of is y'all would probably need to have the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign any written resolution documenting y'all's approval of the transaction, and documenting their authority to sign the closing documents. Since we, in effect, are the buyer, the only thing the city will sign will just be a simple closing statement, and the DDA would be signing the deeds over. So you can do it either way, you can have another meeting on February 15th, or just authorize it all tonight, and then just the mayor and clerk and city manager would just need to attend on the 15th. So I was just trying to save y'all an additional meeting, unless you want to, that's up to you.
Appreciate that. So council, I'll entertain a motion, and as our city attorney has advised, it may be filed to include the execution of paperwork is needed on behalf of the mayor, city manager, and city clerk. Entertain a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Thank you, council.
I just want to clarify, understand the motion to approve the purchase-sell agreement.
Correct.
I think the agreement is in the package.
It is. Next item on the agenda, consideration and approval of task order number three, EXP for Jeanette Drive construction oversight. I'm going to refer to Mr. Damon Hall on there.
Evening, Mayor Proton, council. Tonight, I bring them for you, the first task order has already been approved, the cost not to exceed 3,000 for the survey work of the Jeanette, excuse me, of the Jeanette Drive Bridge. And task two was already approved on the April 6 meeting, also at a cost not to exceed $12,000 for the final plan of preparation for letting those bids. And as y'all all know, those bids were lit, and they were extremely high, so we have come back to EXP and asked them to do some different type of plans that would include some prefab walls and set up board walls on this project bid. And also, the city went in and done the what, well, have bids to have a contractor redo the water line and clean the side up. So that part's been done, and we feel like with these three factors, that these bids should be considerably lower. And also, we'll allow EXP, was task order number three attached and requested for approval, the amount should not exceed 25,000 in coverage of construction engineering inspection. This will include the oversight construction activities, engineering decisions, and plan changes. The bid culvert and head wall installation is currently out for bid with opening date of Monday, February 14, 2022, at 2:45 PM. So this is just asking, what we're asking for is up to $25,000 to be approved for EXP to do the final inspections and engineering and oversee the bid process of the Jeanette Drive Bridge.
Mr. Mayor Proton, may I add some information?
Yes, sir.
I had a long conversation with Mayor Lawrence this morning about this particular discussion, and I, prior to motion, want to make a little bit of clarifying points. We've already decided that we are going to, moving forward, obtain engineering for our projects related to particularly runoff and damage from storms, and that has obviously extended our procedures quite a bit from just going out and fixing these things internally. We've also made, at least for this project, and possibly some very other key projects that we may be facing very soon, we think that we should bring all of our projects up to DMT standards. And basically, this money is to pay the engineer to oversee the contractor as he performs the construction. And that will allow the, that will allow possibly lower bids on the construction side with the oversight of EXP. For those of council, members of council who are not familiar with EXP, basically, that's a consulting group. We first had interaction with them when the cove collapsed, and they helped us in that situation. This is a former DOT engineer that now has a consulting company that does this. So I think this is not only an opportunity to get more experience with them, and experience what we can do in the future as it relates to DOT, but also get this project moved for a lower cost. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. All right. This time, council, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to re-approve the task order number three, EXP for Jeanette Drive construction oversight.
I'll second that, sir.
Any further discussion? If I may, council, the only further discussion I have on is the DOT pre-qualified engineering, it takes more time, as Dr. Foster was saying, it's well worth it. It's an investment in our infrastructure, it's an investment in our community.
Absolutely.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Same? Opposed? Same? Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, consideration and approval of Resolution 2022-02, extension to temporary moratorium. Mr. Damon Saffan.
The council will recall that previously, I believe back in August, the council adopted a temporary moratorium on residential rezonings and related issuance of building permits, and the reason for that is that council wanted to look at the provisions of zoning ordinance and sort of do a comprehensive review of whether the densities in the various residential districts were appropriate, and whether changes were needed in order to reflect what was best for the community insofar as residential development. As you can imagine, it's sort of a complex question with a lot of factors, and so it's taken a little bit more time than what's expected, and in that, the end result should be amendments to the zoning ordinance, and we have to go through the zoning ordinance amendment process of advertisement, plus it goes through the planning commission, and a public hearing before them, and then a public hearing before the city council. All that takes some time, so my understanding from the committee, looking at this, is that they need some additional time. And so the resolution before you would extend the moratorium for an additional 90 days from March 1st of this year until June 1st of this year. If the committee's work gets completed early, then the council has the ability to end the moratorium early. So this is just to give the committee additional time to be able to make an informed recommendation to the council for the needed changes, and so before you is a resolution to extend the moratorium until June 1st, 2022. Now I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Council, this time, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 22-02, extension to the temporary moratorium.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Thank you, council. All right, before we get into committee reports, one thing I did fail to mention at the beginning of the meeting, and I apologize, Mayor Lawrence is with us via Zoom. Unfortunately, at this time, he is positive for COVID, and so if he was not able to join us tonight, he would mean to let everyone know that. This time, we'll move into committee reports.
We added restrooms.
Yes, we did. Thank you. Item K, you call the table off. Item K, the restrooms on Main Street, in addition to the agenda?
Yeah. When we get to public safety report later, I'll have a drawing of proposed addition to the fire department. While I was getting that, I was able to get from the architects a partially completed construction drawing of upgrading the restaurants on Main Street. I apologize for not getting that to you all earlier than tonight for your review, but these are drawings that CPL was contracted to do a number of months ago. I would like to be able to, in the very near future, pass this information back to them and say, let's get this done so we can get it bid and get it completed. I don't know if it's the will of council to maybe pass this to Parks and Recreation, or review it and discuss it another time, or just say, hey, let's move on with it and turn a loop. But for your consideration, you've got copies of the drawings. I've also got a number of questions from the architect about possibility of landscaping and the fixtures in the new restrooms. What is, what's council's?
Well, I don't suggest we send it back to a committee. That's just my opinion of it, but.
I'd like to say, first of all, we've been waiting a long time for this, and I don't really see that they've done much other than do a plan. really see that they've done much other than do a plan.
No, these, these are a prelude to construction drawings. They, they are prepared to complete as soon as this is.
I don't know that we ever decided what committee this would go through.
I think that's part of the problem.
Ah, gotcha.
I think it was, there was some discussion about it being in several different ones. And I also remember having, the most recent information I have on this is we all met with Brandon, and it's probably been, it may have even been a year, and kind of had a conversation with him. And so, I'd like to be able to review this, possibly if we have time, discuss it at the retreat, or maybe some other time, a work session before we move forward. And I'd like, I'd like to be able to read the plans, first of all, and also see some completed drawings if these are not completed.
I think we can send this to electronically, that you could expand it and read it much easier.
Didn't we have something else to tie this in with the whole downtown?
It kind of ended before, I think it got to the restaurant, to the restaurants. I don't know that that specifically addressed the restaurants, but I don't think I'm quite ready to tell them to go build it.
Let's discuss it at the retreat, if we can, and see what we can resolve on it to get it moving.
I know there were issues with the covering, because that's not, it looks to be solid brick, it's not, there were a lot of issues around the actual structure. But anyway, that's my opinion on this.
Did we decide if we were taking the time and temperature thing out? I don't think we decided.
I don't think we have.
That's part of the questions that they.
I got you. Okay. So, can we make a motion to, to move this to the retreat to discuss and see what we can?
Entertain a motion. Some moved?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Same?
And there are, I have sent this electronically to Mayor Protim, mayor, and city manager, if one of you could share that.
I'll get those sent.
Yeah, and that way, this is an eye test right here.
In truth, yeah. It's almost as bad as Beverly's peppers. Sorry.
All right. We'll move on to committee reports. First up, the Development Committee, Dr. Proctor, myself. Dr. Proctor?
Well, I'd like to add, like David said, we, we've been meeting weekly, and I think Sonya now has participated in two or maybe even three of those meetings. And I think that we are making progress every meeting and refining the future. And so, the ninety-day thing was more to make sure we have enough time to get all the bureaucratic things solved as much as anything else. That's all I have.
Streets and Parks, come in.
We don't have anything new right now. We're waiting on possibly the retreat to do some other things, and hope that's involved in things that we already have that need some clarification, just like the insurance.
Next is the Administration Committee.
Administration Committee met on the twenty-first of January and discussed some compensation issues that we will be bringing later. Safety training, the Human Resource Group is working on that and wellness, also looking at badge identification for employees, badges that can be worn, and some equipment concerning that. I'll bring some things to you hopefully at the next meeting for consideration.
Wonderful. Water and wastewater, committee.
Wow. I missed something. So, we had a really good meeting Friday on water and wastewater, some exciting, some excited, some exciting things and some decisive things, hopefully for our community. Two weeks ago, our wastewater treatment plant was, the plans were provisionally approved. So, that's something we've been waiting for, for really a lot over a year. The remainder of the process now that will go back to the U S D A. There'll be a lot of go-between between the city and the E P D, and the U S D A wills the one grant for that eight million dollar project, and hopefully we'll be able to get that moving as soon as we possibly can. The consent order is ready, I think, to be presented. What a document. I mean, really, a very, very professionally engineered document that talks a lot about our water needs and even addresses some possibilities for resolving those issues that we have. It did not extend to the point of the specific ask for E P D about those plans, but it tees it up for the next step, and that is due to be presented to the E P D on February the fourteenth. There's one item I want to bring before council that came out of that meeting. If you remember, the one thirty-six water project, probably one thirty-six that we partnered with, with the county, that is currently gravity-fed as it comes into our system, and there have been some conversations about would a, would a pump station benefit that line so that we can obtain more water from Gilmer County and the county in the case of need. And so, the first step in that, we believe, would be to engage term seed and kind of study to see what the possibilities are. And if it's possible, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to give a motion to do that.
Absolutely. Entertain a motion.
I so moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed?
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
And I do have an electronic version I received today of the consent order that I will be sending out to city council as well for your.
This is really cool. I mean, it has a great map, but we now have maps of the mines and be able to predict our shortcomings if we have a doubt. Let's see, meter grant, if y'all remember, we applied for a grant. I think we made the first cutoff for that, and we're still waiting to hear unless there's been an update, but to get our meters part of the carried money to get our new automated meters paid for. We also discussed the possibilities of exploring other options if we did not receive that grant, do some, some G F A loans, but a lot of work still to be done on that. You've probably heard about an incident last week where we had an issue with a fat, clean out, restrap. Staff has been, is empowered to develop a fog policy. As a matter of fact, they've already drafted one. That's not fogs and weather, that's fog as in fat oil and grease, and we will be working on a policy to bring before council once that is completed. It's time for our intake clean out. I think we approved that process last month, did we not, David? And then finally, J L White is very close to the, to the point of where we can repave it, maybe a little warmer weather, but we do need a motion to get that process rolling to clarify what needs we have, what money. Some monies have been budgeted, some money for paving that or in other projects, so I would like to empower staff to figure out exactly what we need and possibly let bids on that.
Entertain a motion to direct staff on the J L White project and repayment.
I'd like to add to that, if I could, go ahead and get the bids on it. Add the bid process, and that way we have something to approve. Asphalt plants should be opening up in the next six weeks typically.
Right.
So, now might be a good time to get that bid out.
Awesome. Have a motion on second.
Motion on the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Same. Thank you, council. Mr. Faust, did you have anything?
I covered it pretty well. It was very, they did a very good job.
It was funny.
Thank you.
All your stuff.
Next committee is the Police and Fire Committee. Mr. Lew.
Thank you for approving the fee schedule earlier. That's something that came out of the committee. Also, I mentioned earlier, you've got a concept drawing for an addition to the fire department. This is nothing but a concept drawing. What I would like to do is, and just to let you know, this has been shared with the fire department through, I'm not sure how far we have down, at least lieutenants may have been through, the whole fire department has got a blessing, concept blessing from them. I believe Sonya has given the same. I'd like permission to get a bid from Clark Patterson, being on taking this and preparing construction drawings again, like we are in the restroom. We approve the construction drawings as it progresses. I know there are some labeling issues on this that Kirk and I have already talked about. I'd like to be able to take this to construction drawings.
Entertain a.
At least get a bid for construction drawings.
Entertain a motion to move forward for those drawings.
Some moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Same. Thank you, council. And next item is our financial report. Ms. Redd.
Okay. You all have been given the report that we have kind of migrated to over the past several months, maybe about six months ago, we changed our format just a little bit, and with the addition of Sonya, I would like to tweak this a little more. So, hopefully next month, we'll have a little better narrative on explanation of the numbers. Right now, it's just a percentage. You look at what the budget is, what's been spent to date, and where we are percentage-wise to where we should be if we were on target, which is nine percent into January. And so far, everything's looking pretty good. Did include the actual budget report, so you can see every single line that has gone through our system rather than just the summary that we have been giving, given. And again, I will be presenting a little better narrative next meeting to kind of give highlights a little better, just so you can have a better idea of what's going on.
All right. Thank you.
And if there should be any questions, please ask, and I'll give you the answers.
It's actually readable.
Yeah, I was thinking that too. She's getting bigger.
Next item on the agenda, the Development Report, Mr. Waters.
Mayor Protim, council. The month of January, we did ten permits, building permits, seven new residential, three renovations, two signed permits, a hundred and twenty-two on-site inspections, eight soil erosion on-site inspections, four animal calls, a hundred and twenty-two business licenses have been processed, and seventy-one insurance licenses have been processed.
Fantastic. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item is the Police Report. I believe Chief Matt Dawkins provided that to us electronically. You also have it here. Any questions or comments? Next item is the Fire Report. Chief Steenbro. I might need you to walk up here.
You just wanted to see the water. For the month of January, city's fire department has spawned to a hundred and thirty-nine calls. Those were no structure fires, one vehicle fire, two grass fires, ten motor vehicle accidents, with injuries, a hundred and fifteen emergency medical responses, and eleven posters. As always, that's anything you didn't hear above.
Fantastic. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, the next item on the agenda is an executive session. At this time, I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Same?